Hello, everyone. So, we're a little behind, but we're setting up. It's currently 7:45 or 44. Tonight, we're having a hearing for adult-use cannabis, and it's a joint session or meeting in the sense that we're going to be discussing a text amendment going to the City Council eventually in the near future. So, tonight, we have both the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. And, uh... We're all going to stand up to do the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do I do it as each group?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll start with the planning first.
We call the meeting to order at 7:45. A roll call from the Planning Commission. Chair Petoska is here.
A.J. Weir.
Eric Petoska.
David Brown.
Jason Berry.
Ron Bloom.
Zoning Board.
Clifford Griffin.
Here.
Jeff Atwell. Here. Brandon Richardella.
Here.
Mike Sendy.
Here.
Eric Proustow.
Here.
Joseph Watkins.
Here.
Eppet Bandaher.
Sylvia Warren. Howard Richardson. We can back over to you, please.
So, we have an ordinance that we're reviewing. The public will have an opportunity to voice their comments for or against the ordinance. So, how this will be conducted is the attorney, Matthew Ingersoll, will step to the podium, and he's going to do his presentation of the ordinance that's going to the City Council. He's going to go into details about the particularities, and then, we're going to have it open to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, Planning Commissioners, to speak, and then, we'll open it to the public. Matthew, you ready?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Matty Ingersoll. The City Council Alderman asks us to assist in putting together a draft ordinance for review by both the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board for the use and regulation of adult recreational cannabis within the city of Blue Island business establishments. So, this is the, I'm sure you guys may or may not be aware, the state passed Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act in the summer of this year. And so, municipalities throughout the state are revising their zoning codes. It's kind of been a flurry of activity in the last few months to get the regulations on the books prior to January 1st or as early as possible in the new year, because on January 1st, anybody who currently has a medical license will be able to begin selling recreationally. Now, the Blue Island, the city doesn't have a medical cannabis business currently operating, so the need to get it done by one-on-one isn't really pressing here. But, that being said, if like, if medical cannabis operators that aren't able to begin selling recreationally at their present location can apply for a second site. So, you know, I guess there's a outside chance that one of them could locate here. The vast majority, though, of shops opening up is going to probably be beginning in May. There's a, the application window right now for everybody that doesn't have a medical license opened on Monday, the 6th, I believe, and it's open until like, the 1st or 2nd week of January. And then, the state is going to rank all of those licenses, and the first top 75 are going to get those licenses. And then, that's when, you know, there's going to be a lot of people looking to locate in a lot of different places. So, with these are, with respect to the city, if you've had a chance to review the ordinance, basically, it goes through and it defines the different types of cannabis business establishments that the, that are allowed under the act. So, all of these, like, these definitions and these, and this language comes directly from the state statute. As far as locations within the city, in the industrial area, the uses that are not, like, the non-retail uses, the growers, basically, transportation logistics is going to be limited to operation in the industrial areas. The primary limitation on those, as far as, you know, they can't be located within 1,500 feet of one another. As far as retail uses, dispensaries, they are, the way that this is drafted currently right now is they can be located basically anywhere along Western Avenue within the city, but it's got to be on Western. So, it's the, I believe, the C1, C2, and then, the UTOD districts is where it's tentatively allowed to be. And obviously, this is a, you know, a, this is a draft for your, you know, consideration. This isn't obviously final. This is just something for, you know, this is words on a paper to kind of get the conversation going and give you an opportunity to kind of review. This is similar to the legislation that's being adopted throughout the state right now. There's nothing really too exotic here. But, you know, that's what that, that's a very kind of high-level overview. If anybody has any specific questions with respect to the language here or anything else related to the act, I'd be happy to answer any of them.
You start with me. So, I have a copy of the ordinance and ordinance, and I have some questions. The first one is Section 4, Section 1, 66.023. When you describe the adult-use cannabis dispensary organizations, and you say a special use for C1, I think we're also missing the C2.
Yeah, well, actually, no. It's, uh, C2 grabs everything that's a special use in C1. Like, so the, like, if you look at the C2 in the code.
So, you're going to go falling back?
Yeah, yeah. It's, A says everything that's a special use, and the C1 is also allowed as a special use in the C2. But, yeah, it's a good question.
Are there considerations going to make it a permitted use in C2?
So, let's, let's back up. So, it should be a C2. We should start with C2, and then, it falls back to C1. That's the order here?
If it's allowed in, if it's allowed in C1, then it's allowed in C2. Is, I believe, how the code flows.
Right, so, it should be shown here as a letter C, District C-2? Because then, under C-2, under special uses, there's number 1. Says any special uses will fall back to C1.
I don't have a copy of the code in front of me, but it's meant to read that.
Okay.
Like, if, the way it was, the intent was for it to be allowed basically along Western Avenue, in the C1, the C2, and the UTOD.
Another question that I have is at the very beginning, Page 2, whereas, towards the bottom, where you're talking about regulating cannabis establishments, including rules governing the time, place, manner, and number of cannabis business establishment. Could we have something that talks about advertising or signage? Because that's going to be a huge factor for these businesses. It's the signage. Because the signage is also going to affect the distance technically for signage.
Yeah, that's, that's, if the statute lays out distance requirements with respect to advertising, I don't know if it, if it regulates signage specifically, but advertising it does. And the code requires, the zoning code requires that all uses be, comply with the, with the state statute. That being said, if you want to, if we want to add specific restrictions from the state statute, or, you know, something a little bit more stringent, that's something that can certainly be accommodated.
Yeah, I'd like to at least see something that talks about signage, and especially the specificness.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's going to be, that's going to be an issue that's going to be discussed at the counter when a person's applying for a business license application. The next thing they're going to ask for, if it's permitted or special use, and special use, it goes through the process, it's going to be the signage and how, and how I can regulate it. Besides, it's going to show up in the signage section of the General Code and the UTOD. There should be something here in this ordinance that at least talks about it or pigtails or dovetails back to the regular ordinance in the UTOD.
Okay.
And then, I have some of the uses. But, number 4, adult-use cannabis dispensing organizations, those are dispensaries, right?
Yes.
Page 7. You show 4. So, what this is saying, that we allow for 4 in either in the C2, C1, or UTOD district, right?
It's, it's 4 total allowed in the, in the city.
Right.
And it, I think, I guess technically, the statute allows co-location of, like, for example, like, I believe it's craft growers.
Right.
Can also be dispensaries. So, if, if, as of right now, that, that's allowed under the state statute. So, I guess, in theory, then, if there's a craft grower and a dispensary in the industrial district, then there can only be 3 dispensaries on Western Avenue, the way that this is drafted.
So, now, the other uses, let's say, smaller, the craft grower or infuser. When you're saying 4, are you going to say 4 with the others or 4 in total? Because the ordinance doesn't really go into specification about the other uses. It says it very specifically, 4 dispensaries.
Mm-hmm.
What about the other ones? Is there a number that we're going to be creating, or?
I think it's, I believe it's 4.
I read it somewhere, but I can't find it.
Yeah, I believe it's 4. I believe it contemplates 4 total of the other types of uses. So, 4, I guess, so it'd be 8 total.
Right. So, this is one I want the Planning and Zoning members to be very cognizant. 8 uses, or 8 entities, 4 for the dispensaries, the retail portion of it, which, as the attorney mentioned, can be also one of the co-locators at a small grower, or I guess, transportation, and then...
Yeah, I was just going to say 2. That you're referencing Page 7, Section 4, so Section 8?
Yeah.
And then, Page 10, Section 8. They are the, we're referencing specific numbers. Dispensing organizations and then not dispensaries.
Right.
So, what I would ask is, in the ordinance, if it could be spelled out very clearly at the beginning, so when a person's reading this, they know 4 and 4, because it comes down to limitations. You could leave it in this section, number 8, Page 10. But if you also mention it at the beginning of the ordinance, I think it would be very clear. So, whoever starts to read from the beginning towards the end know at least 4 dispensaries and 4, any of the other users.
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem.
That's our, I mean, I had that in mind as well. I just wanted to be, I mean, should we be more specific, like, 2 infusers, 2 craft growers? Or is it just, could it be 4 craft growers, then?
It could be, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm reading. I mean, I think we should be more specific with the number of business types within each, you know, craft grower, infuser.
Right, and I think people have been a little bit more vague on that right now, just because no one really knows what this is going to look like. But, that being said, if that's something that, I don't, there's not a problem to, to make that change. If, the only thing is, if we want to, I mean, if you're going to allow at least 1 of each, I mean, it's going to bring the number up above 4. But, yeah. So, I mean, I, but I guess, if you want to say a maximum of 2 infusers, for example.
That was another question I have for you, not really. Is that our role, or is that up to the City Council to determine the number? I believe our role is to determine whether it should be allowed as a business type within that specific zoning district, rather than the number that are allowed, correct?
Well, I mean, the, the, the Planning Commission, I believe, is charged with, you know, giving feedback on these type of things. The Zoning Board is the one that ultimately makes the recommendation.
To the City Council.
But the Zoning Board is a, is a recommending body. So, if the board wanted to recommend a certain number, then it would, that, that would be appropriate for it to do so. The council could then take it, and they could tweak it, or, you know, accept it as written.
But as the Planning Commission, we're just the type of business within that district.
Does anyone have any comments? I don't, I don't want to take up so much of the time. Do other people have?
I did, additional questions. The rationale behind the distance, I understand that, you know, state statute says there has to be a minimum distance between 2 dispensing organizations, but the rationale behind the 1,000 feet, 250 feet, 1,500 feet on all the different types, starting at Page 6? You know, like, you know, 1,000 feet between, you know, between a pre-existing public or private nursery, and then, 1,500 feet between existing zones that are used for residential purposes, 1,500 feet between a pre-existing adult-use cannabis, and then, under cultivation center, 1,000 feet, 1,500 feet, 1,500 feet?
We were talking about the same thing over here. Is that a state recommendation in terms of that, in footage?
No.
Or is that something that these are up for us?
It's, it's, it's just something that, and again, like, these aren't, these are suggestions just to get this exact conversation going. There are, you know, cannabis is viewed by different municipal bodies, like, throughout the state, very differently. Some of them are saying absolutely not, no way. Some are doing stuff like this where they're saying, you know, we're not going to let it be within X feet of a certain type of schools. You know, you know, primary schools, for example. Or, there was a debate at a council meeting I was at the other night about putting a limitation from, like, recovery houses, like, places that help people with addiction, you know, not allowing them within certain square footage of that. This is just kind of an idea of the type of restrictions that other municipalities are doing, but there's no state requirement that you do that. So, I mean, they can, they can be taken out. They, the numbers can be changed. Different types of businesses could be, could be added to it. Really, it's, whatever the board, the Planning Commission, whatever you guys, whatever you guys think. It's the purpose of the meeting is to have this discussion.
So, specifically, the Illinois Municipal League published this, is not making those recommendations?
No, they're, the Illinois Municipal League is making those recommendations. But the IML is not, it, it, they are, they produce suggested legislation. So, the, like, the states, the State Statute, the Cannabis Tax and Regulation Act, I believe the only zoning restriction it has with respect to distance between properties and businesses is there can't be 2 cannabis businesses within 1,500 feet of one another, except for like, the co-located.
The only documentation that we're being provided by an outside organization is recommending certain distances. We are saying that we don't have to take the only recommendations that we've been given into consideration when deciding how far any of these organizations must be from said organizations, churches, schools, or, like you were talking about, housing houses.
No, 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 I'm definitely not saying that you don't have to take their advice. I'm saying that, you, I'm saying you don't have to, but I'm not, I'm not saying that you, you know, you should necessarily ignore it. But, for, all right, for example, there's a community, one of the recommendations is it can't be within 250 feet of, or is it more than that? 1,000 feet of residential? 500 feet? There's, there's a certain distance can't be from residential. Well, one of the communities, their entire retail corridor is on Roosevelt Road, and, you know, immediately behind Roosevelt Road, it's residential all the way. Right. So, if they didn't tweak that number, then they weren't going to be able to have any dispensaries within the, within their village.
Should we face that same situation with Western Avenue as having residences both on and directly off of Western Avenue, a block in either direction?
And that, and that's, yeah.
With the entire length of the city.
Plus rental properties above certain businesses and so forth.
So, so, I provided the IML just as a reference to, you know, show us what this organization is telling us. Their, their distance requirement kind of mimics the sexual-oriented businesses, which is very stringent, 1,000 feet. As the legislation at the state gives us the power at the local level to do this. So, in my findings, the one I provided to, to both groups, I gave some suggested numbers, which I also shared with the attorney. So, for example, like dispensaries, I mentioned, I, I mentioned 0 feet, 150, or, Page 2. Page 2, in Kupari's findings and recommendations for adult-use cannabis. This was created back in July when we started talking about this. What I did was, I was looking at different examples. So, I had people come to me and say, "Well, it should be 0. It should be anywhere in the commercial area, so you won't impact the residential." Then, I had other people say, "It could be 150 or 300." 300 is key, because 300 is also a distance for the liquor license between bar to other users or bar to a public institution. So, maybe you could use the 300 as a marker, artificial marker, for 500 feet. And then, I also go into other details about craft growers. I recommended 500. And then, the infusers between 150, 300, or 500. But those are numbers that I suggested. I'm not sure how both commission and board members feel about that. Because it's just like he mentioned, the attorney. We're surrounded by residential. All, everything in yellow is residential. So, our Western Avenue corridor, if a lot is 200 feet, and we say 500, then it can't be on anywhere on, on our main thoroughfare. So, this is where we have to start tweaking, or we have to start coming to a consensus. And I guess we should start with the most obvious one, the dispensary, and work our way towards the bigger stuff, like the craft growers, infusers, and stuff like that.
Just give us a second. Um, I'm pretty still trying to understand. You're on the IML here on Page 4, top number 5. Do you send these as suggestions? Do you want to go by this as a suggestion? 150 feet?
I don't, I don't have the IML in front of me, but I believe so, yeah. The IML is just, it's, it's, I mean, if you, if you think about, I mean, the IML is...
Anytime the Illinois Municipal League, they put out like, model ordinances, because they're an advocacy organization on behalf of municipalities, and they just make this a little bit easier. Anytime there's big issues such as this, IML puts out a model ordinance on the website just for ease of use for their members.
Right, and, and if you think about, I mean, the IML covers the entire state of Illinois, and, you know, needs down south is going to be very different than the needs of, of the Chicagoland area. So, it's, it's, again, I, he said it, Chairman said it very succinctly. It's a suggestion, it's a starting point. But it's not a require, like, those, those distance requirements aren't mandated by statute.
So, when you talk about linear distance, you mentioned, when you mentioned 500 feet per se, is this from the shortest point, property A to property B?
I believe it's the property line. So, yeah, it would be the nearest part of the property line to that, yes.
From property A to property B?
Right. Right, and I've seen some ordinances kind of play with that by saying entrances.
Yeah.
But then, you might run into a situation where people start playing games with what is the entrance, and, you know, cutting your doors and stuff like that. So, I think the property line is the, probably the cleanest way to do it. But it's also going to make it harder. It's going to, it's going to shorten those distances pretty quick. Like, for example, the Western Avenue to the residential, if it's property, property line, I mean, you don't really have much at all.
Property A.
Right, so hence the reason why I suggested 0, because if we go with property line to property line, then it shoots everything out of the picture.
And excuse me, you may have already addressed this. I was looking for this for a moment. But it does say, under the zoning, that municipalities also may enact zoning ordinances and regulations designing the time, place, including minimum distances between locations through conditional use permits.
Right.
So, that's, so then, when you're saying it's 0, then that would have to be a permit phase?
No, conditional use is a special use.
Okay.
They're just calling it differently.
Okay.
So, in this situation, if I want to come to the municipality of Blue Island and open up a cannabis, according to this ordinance, I have to go through a special use.
Yeah.
So, I would be going to the Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and City Council. And it would be probably like a criteria list, like he mentioned in the ordinance. Now, if a person does that, you cannot apply for like, let's say, a variance on the distance. This is why it's critical that we come to a consensus tonight. In this meeting or in a following meeting, we can't, on what is the distance? Because we can't have any variances.
Right.
Right?
So, could we set it at 0 feet?
Right.
And then, make everything a special use?
Well, he's, the, our attorney is suggesting that all 4 of these dispensaries are going to be special uses, correct?
Yes, and that's seems to be the norm of what's going on. And I think a special use is, it's just going to give you, but, as the board knows, it gives you more control over it on the front end, if, if...
So, what I've suggested, and I've suggested to many people already, during the special use, then we should have like, an abutter notification, a mail letter to at least 250 feet radius around the property. We don't technically have to do it, because we're non-home rule, but as good faith showing to the community around, or to the properties around, that there is a dispensary that's coming. And if someone wants to speak, they could come to a meeting like this.
So, if we do do the, you know, upgrade to 0, is there a way that we can make an ordinance or recommendation for certain hours? That they would be...
Yeah, I've, there's, there's hours, proposed hours for the dispensaries in here.
But we can change those, yeah, right?
Every, yeah, everything in here can be, can be tweaked.
So, so, the idea here tonight is to create an ordinance. If we go, you know, after a year, and we start seeing problems, then we could always amend it. But at least we should start somewhere. My, my opinion is this. I think for residential, it should be 0 for the, for the dispensary.
Agreed.
When it comes to like, library, schools, then we should have a distance requirement, maybe 3 or 500 feet or 1,000. It depends on how the, how everyone here feels about that. Legally, Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes.
When it comes to primary, secondary schools, but when it comes to universities, public or private, it doesn't really require a requirement, distance, especially for signage? Did I read that correct?
I believe so. I believe it was geared towards younger-aged, younger-aged people.
So...
You're...
Younger-aged students.
Right.
I mean, not adults.
So, Crane Valley College, universities wouldn't be considered primary or secondary for the ordinance for the distance requirement. But let's say the library, where you have older and younger folks coming to the library, or a public school or private school? So, during the Section 4, the adult-use cannabis dispensary, so I guess, for all in agreement, 4 is fine to start with. Then, facility may be located within 0 feet from any residential area. Then, maybe 500 feet from private, public, private-public schools. Within 100 feet within each childcare center, not in a residence. Public park, library, games, arcade establishment, where admission is not restricted to persons 21 or older. Here comes one. Facilities may not be located in a dwelling unit. So, is that meaning that if I have a building, 2-story building, the UTOD, I can't open a dispensary on the first floor and have a unit above?
No, that's just saying that it can't be a dwelling unit and also a, a dispensary. I mean, you could, that could be a limitation, though. If you don't want to allow commercial that has residential upstairs, that's something that could be...
How does the group feel about that?
I, I disagree. When you look at so many of the properties on Western Avenue that have residential units above them, I think we're cutting ourselves off at the knees by, by prohibiting that. So, just architecturally speaking, so many, so many, so many of the bars in this town, mine included, as a, as a unit above. You know, I think, I think we would...
The, the only concern that I have would be the security factor, because they really go into the specifics when it comes to the building permit process about security. Not many people are going to break into a bar, but they might break into a cannabis... Not many people are going to break into a bar, but they might break into a cannabis dispensary because they know there's something being stored there that is valuable. So maybe that's the reason? Legally, is there any, can we have it in the same building? I understand, you don't want it in a person's apartment, and we all agree, I shouldn't be selling it from my apartment, as an example.
Yeah, no, you could have it. And you could, it could be on the ground floor of a, if there's residential up top.
Okay.
I believe that there's a, I think in the, there's requirements for a security plan too, as part of this, in addition to the special use process.
And that's regulated by the state, the security requirement?
Yes. The security requirement is regulated by the state. And I mean, and also there's, you could allow onsite consumption, the way that this is drafted, it's not. So I would think that that would be a...
Our, our older men are against onsite consumption.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I was told by many older men.
Right, I'm just saying...
They don't have a problem with selling it, but you shouldn't be consuming it onsite or in public areas.
And I, correct me if I'm wrong, but during the veto session last month, there was an amendment to the cannabis legislation that no longer allows for social clubs and consumption within liquor establishments.
Right, right.
So it would only, we would completely eliminate the ability for onsite consumption within the City of Warrick. So it would only be permitted within private residences.
Right, yeah, public use is still, is still disallowed.
Do you...
Mark Jackson in here, that's G.
Oh, is it?
May not permit onsite consumption.
Right. He does mention it. My question is this, when a person is coming in for a building product, right, and they have to meet the security card, are they going through a state agency? Is the state also reviewing the security measure? Or is that going to follow the locality? I.e. meaning the planner?
That's a good question. Um, I would think it's licensed by the, like, the IDPFR. So I would think that that would probably be part of the license process, but I really don't know for sure. I'd have to, I'd have to look into that.
Yeah, yeah, the state is looking into that. They pretty much, they're...
Stand your name, please.
Oh, my name's Efrain Ortiz.
Just, just come to the microphone. Yeah.
Hi, my name's Efrain.
Efrain Ortiz. The state, IDPFR is pretty much, they're requiring a minimum amount of pages of your security plan. For example, ours is about 55 pages long. When he mentioned the fact that some location can be in a residential unit, for example, you know, a lot of states are against that. They don't like it, they don't allow it. A lot of dispensaries probably wouldn't want to do it for the fact that you were kind of mentioning, it's probably easier to break into a residential. A lot of these dispensaries, what they actually do is they have reinforced steel on the rooftops too, so, but yeah, the state definitely would look at that, the security plan as well. Yeah. And yeah, that's actually, if I'm not mistaken, 75 points. It's a significant part of the, the application process. Yeah, so if, if a dispensary is pretty short on their security plan, they're probably going to be screwed and they won't get a license at all. Yeah.
So the state would prohibit that, would prohibit that from even coming to the locality?
Right. Yeah, they wouldn't, they probably wouldn't get a license if their security plan is not, not on point.
So how this works is that the state is the one that issues the license, and then this person with the license comes to the local municipality and says, okay, I'd like to open up a store here, I'm going to follow the local...
Yeah, yeah, a lot, a lot of dispensaries, for example, they already have contracts for buildings in certain municipalities, but the application process itself does not require you to have a building already. So if, let's say, come May, a dispensary gets a license, then they can essentially start looking for a property. Yeah, as an example, if Blue Island has their ordinance and everything together, if you guys say, hey, well, this is the locations where we're going to allow it, then this dispensary knows, hey, well, this is where we can open, and then they go through the state as well. Yeah.
And if, actually, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the initial licenses are conditional licenses, and you have 180 days, I think, then to actually, to actually get it and finalize it. And I wouldn't be surprised if implementation of the security plan would maybe be a condition upon actually getting a license. So that's a good, that's a good point.
That is correct, 180 days, yeah.
And may I ask who you are with?
Uh, yeah, I'm here representing Starbuds. We're a dispensary in a couple of different states throughout the nation, and we're looking open in Illinois come, come May. Yeah. Yeah, we're actually submitting some of our applications in the next couple of days here. Yeah.
You're not originally a Blue Island resident, are you?
Yeah, born and raised.
Right, because you said it in the last meeting, born and raised.
Yeah, born and raised, I still live here now.
Howard, if I might, and I apologize, I'm not sure what the format really is going to be, if you want to go section by section with questions, or how you want to do it. It sounds to me like we've got a lot of things to consider here tonight. So if I might, I'm just going to start on number four.
Okay.
And Mr. Ingersoll, I thank you for being here, thank you for the review. You know, again, as we look at this or any, any proposed ordinances, I always zero in on the section that says the corporate authorities have determined in the best interest of health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city to grant the proposed amendments, subject to the conditions they're in. And certainly, this is new territory for everyone, with the new legislation coming in January 1st. A lot, as you pointed out, a lot of municipalities across the state are trying to understand it, they're trying to prepare for it, they're trying to, to understand the impact to their communities, both from a family perspective or residential business, and health and, and safety perspective. So there's probably more questions than answers at this point, but I'm sure we'll get there. And one of my questions really, and it does center on, you know, I'll kind of start it. First of all, there's, there's uses of the term organization, and there's uses of the term businesses. And I'm wondering, is there a difference? Is there a difference that we should understand?
Is there, is there, do you mean like adult-use cannabis transporting organization, for example?
Yeah, and in some, in some cases, there's a reference to company or businesses.
Sure. I believe it's just, it's the way that it is defined, so adult-use craft grower, no, I mean, is a facility operated by organization or business, it's, I think it's just they're using the two terms interchangeably as they're in the definitions.
And the adult-use cannabis business establishment is kind of like a catch-all thing?
Adult, exactly.
And Howard, to your point, I mean, I think with this or any other ordinance, for clarity, we need to make sure that, you know, we've got the right languages in there. I also question the number of dispensing and how that was derived, four versus two versus three.
I believe four came from one of the public meetings that the, one of the alderman and committee said, maybe, that there was some talk that four would be a good jumping off point. But I don't think that, I mean, it was the beginning of this conversation, certainly not the end of it.
I mean, I think there's, there's a lot of fervor in trying to figure this out and get them, but, but also I think we need to walk before we run, personally. I also am, I'm concerned about the, the distances. And Howard, I live behind Western Avenue, right? So when we say zero feet, I'm presuming that that could have a very direct impact on where I live.
Yes.
And others. And, and, you know, so I, I recognize the challenges they're in, but, but to the point that, that you had referenced earlier, and we talk about schools, and we talk about parks, and we talk about libraries. And I think we do need to give some special considerations for treatment centers, for example. You know, we need to be sensitive to where our public will be, where the children will be, as we look at distances and, and how these things are promoted, and the signage and so forth. You know, we've spent a lot of time and money on educating, you know, about drug use, legal or not. I mean, drug addiction is real, so we need to be sensitive to those distances, in my mind. Okay, so that covers that one. Let's see, and I'm just going through section four right now. We talked a little bit about proximity to drinking establishments and bars, thank you for that clarification. I didn't see anything relative to square footage area of these facilities. Is, was that, at least with respect to the dispensaries? And should that be a consideration? And somebody raised earlier the hours. Again, I think that we should look at the hours from that, from the perspective of availability.
So what the ordinance, what the proposed ordinance is saying is 75% of the floor area for the tenant space?
But it doesn't say if there's a limit to the floor area. So it could be a mega store, if we had one. Or maybe somebody builds one, one of the vacant lots.
Legally, is there anything that says the size at the state level?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so, no.
So the, your concern is very valid. It could be a small little shop, or it could be like a Walgreens-sized store, or a drive-thru.
It could, in theory, yes.
That's the concerns that the board and the commission have.
Yeah.
Can, can we regulate it to a certain square footage? Do you think legally that's advisable? Will we lose it in court?
Again, we're kind of in the Wild West with this right now, I would think. I mean, it's, we can implement reasonable restrictions. It's going to come down to whether or not the restriction's reasonable and the basis for it. So I guess my thought would be, you could probably limit, limit the size. It's, you know, it could be, I haven't seen anyone else doing that, but that doesn't mean that it can't be done.
Do you want us to speak?
I was just going to say, um...
Come to the...
Sorry.
You could just sit there and listen.
I just, in my head, I'm thinking, what would be the, I guess, the benefit of regulating it? In my opinion, it's, it's really beneficial to have the most parking you can get. You know, these businesses, especially once they come, you could expect lines extremely long. In Colorado, for example, there was one location we opened, it was probably, the line was about a block long. So you could imagine, the more parking that you have, the more space. It's ideal to not disturb either other business owners or local residents, for example, so...
What was the square footage for the Colorado?
Uh, that one was only about 2,500 square feet. It was, it was a smaller one, yeah.
Within 250 feet of a residential area is 100% of the proposed location would be in our town?
In that case, 250 feet, I'd say that probably, yeah, like two blocks, a block, a block away is probably...
So essentially, we'd be like parking on the neighborhood streets to gain access to an establishment that was selling legalized marijuana?
Um, if, if it's a small location, yeah, I would say so, depending, right?
You live here?
Yeah. For a new business, I'd say you could probably expect it. So the larger that you allow it to get, the better in my eyes. Most people are looking at...
For a new business owner.
For me, yeah, we're looking at 3,000 to 5,000 square feet is what we have under contract right now. Yeah, about five to five and a half thousand square feet is, I think, the largest that we have under contract right now. Yeah.
Can you explain why the bigger the square footage? Because according to what the state says is, when a person comes, right, they got to go through the security, the procedure and all that, then it's one blood tender per customer. How many blood tenders can we have? Like 15, 20 at the counter? Or can we only have five?
Uh...
Like in your business?
I, I feel like in Blue Island, probably five would be sufficient. I don't really see the need for having like 12 blood tenders, maybe 12 employees in general with two or three, you know, shifts, for example. But in Blue Island, I probably wouldn't expect to have that many blood tenders in, in one location.
I believe the state session only states a minimum number of employees that they must have at all times in order to operate. I don't believe they're saying...
Maximum.
Maximum.
Because this is a concern that I guess Ron is, is picking up.
Definitely.
You know, the size, the location, under, under our parking is going to be considered retail. So retail is pretty low, but you have to understand, all these properties we have in Blue Island, there's no parking. So it's kind of like grandfather, let's say it was a regular grocery store and someone buys it as a, as a cannabis. When I do my plan review, it's going to go retail to retail, it's not even going to even be a variance. It would just, the assumption is they would be parking on the street.
Just to, if I can just interject, and I don't have the code in front of me, Howard, but the, there would be, and a good point about the restriction based on square footage and parking in retail, I don't know if that's in the, in the code. But also, the special use contemplates additional requirements, is determined to be necessary to assess compliance. There's also something specific with, with parking listed in here. So if that's a concern, it's something that could be added to make it clearer that, you know, the city would reserve the right to, you know, make sure that there's adequate parking.
So what the, what the city says for retail store or personal service is one space for every 300 square feet gross floor area.
So there, yeah, so there, so I mean, if you're, a 5,000-foot building would require, what, 16 spaces? So that's significant, significant parking, or 17 spaces, it's no partial, so...
So in technicality, the retail and the parking is going to be kind of regulated one with the other because of the size. If you only have like 5,000 square feet, you can only have so many customers for parking, for parking only.
I mean, not one time, but again, I mean, it sounds like this is a, this is definitely a cash-and-carry kind of business. You're not strolling the aisles, you know, picking up different produce and this, that, the other. I mean, you're, you're kind of, you know, and I don't know, I've never been to a dispensary. It's full disclosure.
Or is it like that, where people are going to like a candy store, looking at different stuff? How long is a customer?
Is there, Dan, what would the average, how long does the average customer spend? I mean, I can, I can tell you as a, as a bar owner and as a bartender, the average length of stay of migrants. So out of curiosity.
Yeah, I'd say for the first time shopper, let's call him, you know, for the first time client, you could definitely expect them to be there at least a half an hour. You know, you're kind of learning about the different products, what they're good for, you know. And just in general, you know, depending on the locations, you're just kind of amazed to see all these new things, all these new products. So I'd say minimum a half an hour if you're new. In most cases, if you kind of, if you're a daily user, for example, that you were walking in every day, some people literally just walk in, say, hey, let me get my, whatever it is, a joint or an ounce of this, or whatever it is, and they'll walk right out. So it could be, you know, anywhere from two to 10 minutes. But if you're new, yeah, it could definitely take a little longer, up to half an hour, for example.
I have a couple of questions for Howard, real quick. Do we know what other cities in our area are allowing for adult-use cannabis, number one? And number two, how much business can the city expect from outside of this area? Are we going to be an island in the middle of a bunch of dry cities that are going to draw in a lot of traffic from local communities that aren't able to purchase on their own, adding for further distress on our already limited parking and on our residents?
Yeah. Actually, if you just travel on 294 heading south from 55, there's a Windy City Cannabis. It says available January 1, Justice, Worth, Posen, Homewood. So those all are, you know, pretty near us.
And Chicago's...
So there's a commercial for Windy City Cannabis on January 1st.
Do we know if the city would not allow it?
I don't think the 19th ward is going to allow it.
I don't have the board, we don't like, and Elsa, a kind of car, a neighborhood community. Obviously, Homewood is near us, but it doesn't order us.
I think Oklaun opted out, I think Evergreen opted out.
Yeah.
Hey, what about yours, your place, where you were, LeMans?
Going to a referendum in March, March 17th.
Additionally, I'd like to know what the process for tonight is with regards to how we're voting on each individual thing, or if it's going to be on a collective, I guess, your findings here as to what you're recommending?
No, my findings are just a conversation starter. I drafted that just to guide us in the direction, especially when it comes to the sizes. I think craft growers, that's the smaller one. Infusers and the dispensaries would be the most realistic ones appearing at Blue Island, but I might be wrong. You might be looking at transportation-related, Waynesale.
As far, I'm sorry, Howard, as far as what?
So in my, in my findings and recommendations, I really talk about three uses. Reality, you're proposing like six, because you're following the state and what IML is also saying.
But, I mean, there's no requirement that we allow all six. No, we could cut any of them that we want to.
Also, is there any interest in anything other than a dispensary currently from any business owner? Efrain, I believe your name is?
Yeah.
You're a dispensary only?
Uh, yeah.
So essentially, you're here to sell to the population and not in any other capacity, correct? So essentially, you're here to sell to the population and not in any other capacity, correct?
Uh, as of right now, yeah, that's the only interest that we have, yeah.
When it comes to the transportation, is that for like warehousing? Because we do have lots of truck terminals here.
I believe so, yes.
But not manufacturing it? Transportation logistics? They're storing it, they're moving it from A to B? So that might be a valid user also, I guess.
Do we have any interest from any organization in those particular portions of the industry? Because I hear one person interested in becoming a dispensary and no other function other than selling legalized drugs to...
Jeff, I add, there aren't licenses available yet for the other uses. Those become available in May.
Sure.
So there isn't a lot of activity. The focus is really on dispensing organizations since they'll be available in January. But I would think if, it would be a good signal to this industry if you're interested to adopt all of these. The craft grower, the cultivation, the infuser, processing, transporting, you know. There's definitely folks like we have here that probably will represent those industries that will be looking for places that are going to allow it.
I'm not necessarily opposed to the industry.
Yeah.
I'm more opposed to creating a distance of zero for residences in the community in which I live in and my child lives in. And I would imagine that many of the people that I have neighbors with feel the same way.
I want to step back. So the, I think the, all the other business types, grower, cultivation, et cetera, have a distance requirement from any property, zoned residential or used as residential. So even if you were in I-1, I-2, you're on Western Avenue there, south of the tracks, but you have a home, you would still have to be two-hundred-and-fifty feet from their home, for example. The only use, and I'm wondering if this is where you're getting at, for a dispensing organization, a dispensary would be allowed on Western, essentially. There is no restriction from residential property for those, for dispensing organizations.
Essentially, that's all I see coming in is the right to sell to the community that I live in with zero setback from the residents.
But you understand if there's any residential setback, you've effectively eliminated it because of...
Precisely.
Yeah?
Precisely.
Okay.
But I, maybe not like jumping up and down to make it as easy as possible for organizations to make a profit by selling legalized drugs within feet of my home and my son.
Understood.
See, this is the problem. As a city, we opted in. So we're saying, yes, we want this type of business. So that complicates, I understand the frustration here. It's not an easy answer. This is why we're all sitting here, you know, scratching our heads, thinking, what's the best answer? The special use would be an open process where they would go and advertise. I would recommend that and maybe we could have it as a criteria. When a person's going for a special use besides advertising our bulletin boards on the website and in the newspaper, which I do for any meeting, we also have a two-hundred-foot buffer notification where the craft grower, where the dispensary will write a letter that says, "We're interested in opening up a store that's five thousand square feet, probably with zero parking." And, you know, that would be one of the things as a planner I'd be requiring. You know, talk about the park and talk about the use. And then if people come and a lot of people say, "We don't want it in our area," then the planning zoning will say, "I guess the public is speaking." But if there's no one showing up and they're doing the advertisement, should the public feel comfortable?
I guess that's true.
Or is it permitted use? Permitted use is me just, oh, yeah, it falls into zone, they meet everything, I'm signing off on it. So this is the opportunity for the public to be against that.
And if I might, this is, I share your concerns, certainly. But I do think going forward, as we look at those things, we're, it's in the public's best interest to over-communicate those things than under-communicate. So that the public does have, is aware of the voice they have. You know, that's critical. The, you know, the aspect, and again, I'm thinking about where I live and my neighbors live. You know, behind the stores, there's a parking lot. You know, I can envision that parking lot being loaded and there's already businesses there that use the parking spaces. But then using their personal use in the cars afterwards. And social security is a concern that I think we need to really make sure is in place for that. And then a little bit different, and I don't know, I think most of you have lived in town for probably as long as I have, maybe not as much. But does anybody remember when we had a coffee roaster in town? Yep, we did have a coffee roaster, and I'll tell you what, when they roasted coffee, you could smell it all over the town. So when we talk about the processing and the infusing and the bakeries or whatever they're going to be, I think we need to think about that in terms of any other things that may be a result that will be in the community. But again, to the point, the setbacks, the distances, I think that's really something we need to think longer about.
I agree, and I just, you know, we can look at, you know, each individual type of cannabis organization differently. But I believe that most of the focus is on dispensaries. And I, you know, in my opinion, I believe that we, you referenced saying that, you know, the IML, you know, draft ordinance was modeled after sexual oriented business.
Because of the distance.
Because of the distance. You know, I believe that, you know, we should be looking at a dispensary as a liquor establishment. Corbegas, Miskas. If you look at Corbegas, you know, it butts up against residential. Miskas butts up against residential. There's another liquor store on Old Western Avenue, butts up next to residential.
Right, and bottle is no longer existent.
It was. So, you know, I believe that if we set it at zero feet and as a special use, then each individual, up to a maximum of four establishments, would have to come before both bodies before they can be approved.
So liquor stores are in town?
I think three.
Is that new?
Well, it's specific liquor store or you got about...
Mix of...
Of ninety, about ninety, majority.
Yeah, like liquor, liquor, two, three.
But have there been issues?
Can I ask a question to Efron? Efron, right?
Yeah.
So in your business, when a person buys the cannabis and they go to their parking lot, you have a security detail that kind of moves them? It's like, hey, you know, this is a smoking area.
Most locations, yeah. In our applications for Illinois, that's something that we do have. Pretty much, there's going to be like armed guards essentially and guards at the door. Like you said, if somebody's, you know, kind of just hanging around, hey, you gotta go, you know, they're not going to be there distracting either other clients or smoking, for example. Yeah, that's not allowed.
Do you have...
You're not in a parking lot, you're on a residential street. We don't have the parking lots. It exists there.
Yeah, there's practice here, you cannot police, um...
Yeah, let's say, right, right.
Right.
Additionally, even if you do have that, you're now adding that to your neighborhood. And it's something that you deem necessary to have an armed guard to police your parking lot with a zero setback from a residential area. So I kind of feel like if it's already like that nefarious of an operation that it requires that in the parking lot, we're going to set the setback to zero. And no one's concerned?
Well, I'll add to that. I think there's definitely justification for being concerned, but I suppose I have a planner's faith in the special use process. So the reason that something is special use is it's appropriate, say, for Western Avenue or Commercial District, but it may not be appropriate in every location. I'll say, this is kind of a ridiculous maybe comparison, but like a auto body shop might be appropriate on Western Avenue, but there's some locations where it just simply isn't appropriate because it doesn't have the right kind of building or it doesn't have off-street parking or other things. So not only do you have the six criteria that's in Blue Island's code for a special use, which includes the moral, the welfare, and et cetera, that's the first one. The dispensing organization has another nine specific to them. So just like any other special use, I think some folks didn't want a Dottie's type place or whatever on Vermont Street lately. You could decide, yeah, you don't meet the criteria for a special use in this location and we're not going to recommend it. I know we are just a recommending body to the city council and that could be a concern that, okay, I take your recommendation but think otherwise. But I do think there's enough in a special use. You know, you have, you know, the six that are in the code and the nine that are in the ordinance that if it's in a place that it's really going to impact a residential neighborhood, for example, because it doesn't have off-street parking or something, I think there's enough for me to not be concerned about it. I know we could agree to disagree, but for me, I think there's enough there.
Sure. Through two-hundred and however many years of our country's history, marijuana has been illegal and now it's not yet legal and we're already setting a setback of zero from residences.
Well, they'll be able to use it anyways. It doesn't matter. We're not making it illegal to use in Blue Island.
It doesn't need to be in our backyard, literally. Literally, a zero-foot setback is in our backyard.
But your neighbor could be smoking it in his backyard.
I fully understand.
You know, so I think that's where, for me, the moral issue has sort of collapsed when the state says it's legal to use. You just at that point need to try to figure out. We don't have to agree on it, Jeff, we agree on a lot, we don't have to agree on that.
But I agree with that.
I have a child, I have a deaf child who wears cochlear implants. And I don't need to like add to the challenges that he faces on a day-to-day basis by setting this at a zero-foot setback from Blue Island residents.
And to be fair, smoking in your backyard and security issues, two very big different things. We don't know the type of demographic we're going to start getting in, where they're going to be coming from. We don't know any of that yet, so to start with a zero is concerning to me as well.
I think if you don't start with a zero, you're just saying there'll be none in Blue Island. Show me a zoning map that has a location that's not zero feet from the residence.
We haven't talked about, you know, the craft growers and other, you know, things that are coming in.
Because there's no craft growers that are currently here interested in starting in our neighborhood. Who is are the people who are trying to sell to our neighborhood.
And there are residential setbacks for every other use.
Yes.
What has been your experience? You said, you gave an example, there was lines down the street. Was that demand sustained or was that...
Initial.
Yeah, definitely initial. And I'd say that's throughout the whole state. Really, it's not just us, you know, the whole entire state saw it. And, you know, as time passes, you know, the lines are not going to be that long. There's really not going to be lines at all. There's going to be, you know, three people coming in at once, checking IDs, letting them in, they purchase their product, they're out, couple more come in. Yeah, that's, the reason I wanted to say that is because in general, you know, we're always thinking about the future. You know, you don't want to kind of buy a one or two-thousand-dollar property or a two-thousand-square-foot property, as an example, and outgrow that in a year or two. You know, you want to have a four-to-five-thousand-square-foot facility where you're going to grow in that building as opposed to, oh, I got this two-thousand-square-foot building, now I got to move because my clientele's coming in and there's no parking and it's just a headache for everybody.
How many dispensaries are in the town that you're talking about in Colorado?
Oh, that, uh, there's more than, there are Starbucks, that's for sure. That's a fact.
We're talking about having one or four, and then there's tons of them in this town, and that's why we're only getting those. We could have mass lines going crazy, especially if we're one of only a few. Exactly. You know, imagine where there's a setback and you're kind of running around. I mean, it's the double S word, you, we're going to all agree about, to what is... But this is normal now.
Well, I, and I, Jeff, I 100% could only imagine where you're coming from, having a child with special needs and so forth and so on. I do think it would be safe to, if we can imagine this, if the first dispensary opens, that law enforcement is going to be hypercritical about this to start. I think the community is going to be hypercritical. I would imagine, I can only imagine that the operators are going to be Ps and Qs, you know, for at least the foreseeable future to make sure that things are running as smoothly as possible. This is a leap of faith on everybody's part here at the end of the day. And I think as a community, as a town, we can realize that things are maybe not going in the direction that we would like it to go. A dispensary might be, or the people have spoken that the dispensary is where they would like to see it go. We're having these meetings to make sure that we can all try and get at least on the same side of the street on how this looks. But I would, I would think that we are going to have to feel this out as we go because there is no town. And I, you know, I appreciate everyone being here, but I would imagine that it's, yeah, the, if nothing else, the lucky loop factor of the first day, I'll probably go in the first day because I don't know what it looks like. You know, but I think that a sense of professionalism obviously will be maintained in these places. I mean, everybody knows what's at stake here. The license bearer knows what's at stake here, you know.
It's not like your, you know, mom and pop that are, you know, you have five thousand dollars, you can open up a dispensary. You're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars.
And when you look at the legal hoops that are having to be jumped through just to get to this stage, I, you know, like you said, this isn't, oh, this would be fun, we should do it. You know, this is, they're not opening a lemonade stand.
I wish it wasn't.
The concern with the businesses themselves is with the consumers, that's the security issue.
Let me ask you a question. What impact on the communities that you've been working in? What impact do they have on the existing businesses within that area?
I mean, in general, I'd say it's definitely going to help out other businesses, that's for sure. Whether it's restaurants, breweries, bars. I mean, in my opinion, they've been nothing but beneficial. In general, we always try to help out our communities. The fact that I live here, for example, we're always involved with communities. In Colorado, we build houses, we work together with a lot of nonprofits, you know, if we have similar beliefs, exactly. We always try to help out a lot of nonprofits as well. So in my opinion, I've personally seen anything negative. Keep in mind, it's not like the same type of, same exact clientele that you're going to see walk into, for example, a liquor store. You know, in general, you have all kinds of clientele, you know, but it's, in my opinion, it's completely different clientele that you get into a dispensary.
Well, what makes it different?
Yeah, in my opinion, it's just, really, you're just there to get your product and leave. A lot of times, at least in my opinion, you go to certain liquor stores and you got all kinds of, you know, crazy people, right? In my opinion. I haven't gotten enough lately, but at least a few times I have, you know. And there, they're really just there, hey, let me get my joint, whatever it is, walk home or go home and take care of whatever they want to do, right? It's different, in my opinion.
Can you explain about the security? Because you said like armed guards and all that, but that's more for protecting your business because it's cash-only.
Yeah, that's a huge part of it. Yeah, the business and anybody that walks in, you know, of course, like any business, you don't want to just look out for yourself. You're looking out for your clientele, your employees, you got to keep them away from harm as well, yeah.
Has your organization purchased any land here in town or have any intent of operating here in town? Or are you here merely as an advocate for the industry? Do you have any stake here in Blue Island professionally with your current employees?
Uh, great question, not in Blue Island. In the state of Illinois, yes, several properties under contract. Only reason why we didn't do anything in Blue Island quite yet is, to be honest, just because Blue Island was just a little bit behind as far as other cities. A lot of other cities already have their zoning together. They already told us, hey, Starbucks, this is where we're going to allow you to be. So as soon as they told us that, we started putting, looking for the right buildings, putting those under contract. And that's really the main reason why we didn't come put buildings under contract in Blue Island. Yeah, if we determine that Blue Island is a better location for us, God willing, once we get some licenses, then for sure we would keep Blue Island on our radar, yeah.
And Howard, I apologize if you already talked about this. Do we have any examples of municipalities with zero setback right now?
Not sure, I haven't really researched municipalities. I'm more focused on...
The village I mentioned earlier, earlier, Broadview, it just adopted that, that was the Roosevelt Road corridor. They have a zero for residential.
Worth, Worth would be.
Why was it decided that only Western Avenue was...
And I'm sorry, I just, before we get off that, and I'm not saying here, because a lot of it is not happening yet, I'm meaning like anywhere, like other... lot of it is not happening yet, I'm meaning like anywhere, like other states where it's already happening.
Well, it's happening in...
If you're going to look at anything, if it's not in existence.
It's happening in many states. Now Canada is legal, right? Before, it used to be only British Columbia or Ontario, now the whole countries, for that. So, we're going in...
That's a good question. There could be medical that's a zero setback, I just don't know. But that's something that's worth looking into. Like, in the state, it could be.
Examples?
Going back to what you were saying, just on Western Avenue, that's not necessarily true. I mean, it would also cover, under the UTD, it would cover Vermont Street and Old Western, you know, everything within those districts.
Up here, anything in the dark red is C2.
It's actually, the way it's drafted, that there is a restriction that it has to be adjacent to Western Avenue, but again, that's something that... And that was based on feedback. That was based on feedback from, from the, there was a, there was a public forum, and I think that that was just feedback from the community.
Additional special use standards on page eight, it's like K9 facilities and C1, C2 UTD should only be on Western Avenue. How about that and Old Western Avenue to that?
What's the thinking? Because it seems like it's a destination spot that people are going to seek out regardless of... Why would you want to put it supposed to?
So, there's two points to that, because I discussed it, I said, well, why can't we just put it in an industrial zone, right? It's away from residential. And the feedback I get from the aldermen and from people in general is, if it's too out of the way, they're not going to go.
I would better give that.
I think that's absolutely true. Every broker I've talked to, this is a retail product, and you want a retail location. He said himself, he wants to buy a location that's big enough for growth. There's 5% sales tax, there's retail sales tax on it. This isn't an industrial product. It's actually inappropriate for an industrial district. It's a retail product. Like it or not, it's a retail product.
Some municipalities, like Cozen, for example, they're aligned industrial.
Well, that was because they're going under the old medical regulations.
So, where do we have room for on Western Avenue to allow for that traffic flow and growth?
Walgreens?
Certainly not the hairstyling school that is being proposed as a possible dispensary.
Well, I think for that one, you would look at the special use regulations and say, you don't have the available parking, there's too great of an impact. I think this definition would say Marin Valley is a school, it just says a public school, and you would say, no, we don't recommend it in this location.
Where?
What?
Where?
Walgreens?
Print source.
You have parking?
Drive-through?
You're not, you're not, you're directly...
You only spot that you're allowing that one of four businesses that we've stated can exist, you have one location for what you're saying is up to four businesses as dispensaries.
I think the way to...
Is that spot to...
No, no. I think the greatest restriction would be to require onsite parking, since so few commercial spaces have onsite parking.
Again, then the hardship then becomes on the residences that are then zero setback from them. When they start parking on the streets one block off of Western Avenue, and essentially invading the neighborhoods to purchase marijuana. I'm not demonizing marijuana, I just kind of feel like perhaps our city isn't exactly currently built for that use without beings in our literal backyard.
Talking about inclusive traffic.
Sure. You're saying that there's going to be a lot of growth, Jason, and so if there's a lot of growth, and you're saying you're going to allow four businesses, they can be on Western Avenue, but we have one proposed site that is currently possible to actually like have parking for that business? Where else but in the neighborhoods?
And we've also talked, trying to get like a valid, you know, grocery store in town, and all these other bigger businesses that do help the entire community, and Walgreens is like one of the only areas we have right now that we talked about for the past two years, as being like a good fit for something like that, hopefully one day.
Yeah, but just to give you an example, the people that have approached me for Walgreens, a dialysis center, medical clinic, a dollar store, and possibly another gas station. So the supermarkets are not coming, except for, you know, if we want to call Aldi a supermarket. So, it's just sitting here, because the piece of property is just very expensive, and the property owner doesn't want to sell it for less. But the uses that were proposed to me, that are coming to me, are the ones that I just mentioned.
When we're talking about the zero distance, too, and we're talking about, since you mentioned the place, the hair salon, so I have lots of students from the school and the college, but as you just mentioned, too, security is basically for the business. And you talk about the people, we have people coming from everywhere. When people come in from wherever, walk into your facility, walk out the doors, and walk across to the college, lean up against the wall and wipe it off, what's going to stop them?
You call 911, it's illegal.
Honestly, I think this is the same problem that you would have with liquor stores. You know, it's the same problem you could have with liquor stores.
That's what I was getting at. The liquor store, the liquor store, there's people leaving the store.
Sure. And I mean, obviously, under the proposed, it would still be illegal.
We really need some place where they can have, for these parks, that's just something like Walgreens, where they can come out of the place, stay in a kind of controlled environment, not a controlled environment, but it's not many of them, so.
You know, and that's the critical part of the discussion that we're having tonight, is, I think, to just kind of air some of those concerns, so that they can be crafted into, you know, appropriate ordinance language. Do you have a dispensary in Denver?
Yeah, we have several, yeah.
And the reason that I, the reason that I raise that is, you don't bring some reality of what I've experienced in cities that have legalized it. You know, going out to breakfast at 7:00 AM and having kids on the corner doing bongs, sleeping in doorways, sleeping in the parks. I mean, you know, the, obviously, the homeless is an issue out there, but it is a reality. I mean, drug problems are a reality in Denver and other areas. You know, the other, the other piece of it is, and I think you made the, you know, the comment, well, this is the new normal. Maybe it's going to be, but we have a very serious responsibility here to protect the health and welfare of our community. And the fact that the state legislature passed it, and if I misunderstood my colleague here, you know, that morality aside, there's always morality. It doesn't make me comfortable that the state passed a law necessarily, now we just have to blindly go forward. I mean, I get the conditions of it, but, but that's why I'm enjoying this conversation, because I think we really do have to look in the future. We have to look at the fact that, you know, we have a town that we don't see the growth we want to see, and we're struggling with the Walgreens property we talked about. We've got a hospital now that's empty. There's a lot of factors to consider that are going to impact our community.
Howard, you've got a little timeline here. What is the immediate need for us to have tonight?
None, none.
I'm not voting on anything tonight, because it's just a public hearing.
Right, it's a public hearing, but eventually, we're going to go down that route, and we're eventually going to have a voting, and we're going to, we're going to do this. So, I spoke with several people already, like during the week, and everyone feels like we need to take our time. I had a conversation with Chairman Malato last night at CDC Community Development, and he says, you know, let's see what happens in today's meeting, and most likely, we're going to have to announce another meeting here for advertising purposes into January. So, what happens here is, it's a tax amendment, so it has to go through planning, zoning, and city council, but now there's a new caveat. It also has to go to community development, where now the people that are elected in office want at least an ordinance to go through a committee review process. So it's going to be community development also reviewing it, where you have seven aldermen that sits there, half of the board, yeah, the board of aldermen. So, there is no timeline, we don't have to do it by the 17th of the city council. What happened was, in our second-to-last community development meeting, we had a special session or a special meeting just to start discussing cannabis, and several people at the audience said, we can't fall asleep, we should move quick. In other words, don't take like a year and a half to do it, but don't do it quickly, too. So this is where we are. So I was encouraged by the chair, you know, Mr. Malato, to at least have a special meeting in December to start this discussion. And I suggested we should have both groups together, instead of planning and zoning, because now we're all talking to each other. We're all looking at the same problems at different boarding commission levels, but at least we're having a conversation, so we could go forward with some ideas.
Can you speak to that, if it's important to move quickly, or what the consequences are to move quickly?
Yeah, I'm very concerned, like, if the public, obviously, is concerned about this, and they want to have this, you know, the public hearing, we have two people from the public here, you know, and finding out from them, but at the end of the day, it's the aldermen that vote on that, not us, right? Although people want to vote on this, it's our recommendation to them. But does it put the city of Blue Island at a gate wall, the longer we wait, or is there a timeline of having this done by the, you know, January 1st, that we're, that timeline that's given to the state of Chicago?
Well, as I, as I mentioned, I've been to the deference take on this, since he's actually in the industry, but the, as I mentioned, like, the, there's going to be a round of licenses that are going to be issued in May, and then people are going to be scrambling for that six months to, you know, find a slot and, you know, finalize wherever they're actually going to be located at. I don't, I don't think anybody in the administration wants to rush this, but I don't know if, you know, I would think the earlier that it's, there is regulations on the books, if it's going to be allowed, then the more likely that, you know, somebody, an applicant may, you know, put, Blue Island would be on the radar. Now, I don't want that to be perceived as, you know, advocate, like, I don't have a dog in this fight, I don't live here, I'm just, you know, I was asked to put together an ordinance, and, you know, that's what I've done. But that's just my, my thought on, as far as, I think the only advantage of passing something sooner would be, it would give applicants a longer time and notice that Blue Island is going to allow it.
Can I ask a question, too, about the May 1? I know the state started awarding licenses for those facilities that could sell adult use on January 1, sort of ahead of time. So is the same thing happening for the May 1, or do, or do all the licenses, those next 75, or whatever the number is, get awarded on May 1, and then there's that scramble to find locations?
I think it's, so, yeah, the medical can start now, or January 1, but we don't have any medical. June 1, and then there's 180-day window for them to, they're going to, and it's similar language, conditional licenses, but it's conditioned on them...
Okay.
Dotting i's and crossing t's, and they have 180 days to do it upon issuance, and then presumably, if they don't, then, I don't know what would happen, because there's a second tranche of licenses then later on in 2020 that are going to be issued at that point.
Right, yeah, December or something like that, yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know if, if, you know, presumably, some of the first 75 won't get the final license. Will those then be awarded to the next people on the list that didn't get it, or will it fall back until December? I don't know.
No, I was just thinking, you know, if, you know, the city decides to allow it, and people are getting their licenses ahead of May 1, knowing, starting on May 1, that they can sell adult use, you know, just the same way that medical, you know, they started announcing them in, I don't know, September, October, okay, we gave one to Mundaline, okay, we gave one to, you know, these different municipalities, and so that might be a factor if the city was trying to, I don't know, I would say recruit the dispensary.
Yeah.
I might, I don't know this offhand, but can you know how many licenses total would be available for non-currently existing businesses? So the people that are applying from December 2nd till December 31st for those licenses in May, how many are available? And, well, that's my first question. Then the second question is, aren't there only a certain limited number of licenses allowed within each region of the state?
Yes. Yeah, there's 75, I believe, that are going to be awarded, and then, yeah, they're partitioned out in different districts, different... I think that the act breaks it down into districts, and again, Efrain might know that better.
Yeah, I'd like to add to that. One of the things, like you said, it's broken down into the districts, right, the regions, and basically from Kankakee up until, what is it? It's eight counties from Kankakee North, and Cook County being one of those eight counties. In those eight counties, there's going to be 47 licenses awarded. So that's one of the things where, when you guys are discussing, you know, four possible locations, it's probably not going to even happen. You know, maybe we'd be lucky, you know, in a way to get one, you know, just because the, in general, from those eight counties, there's going to be 47 licenses awarded to begin with. The rest are going, are split up between the rest of the state of Illinois. So it'd be tough, number one, to be the one that's, that gets approved, right? That's already a lottery in and of itself, right? And then number two would be that this organization or this group of people that get approved, that they're actually interested in Blue Island, right? That'd be the second thing. So I don't see anything, any city around us having more than one or two, two locations, sorry, it's probably not even going to happen, yeah. I don't see that happening at all, anywhere around us.
So if I understand that correctly, does the licenses that are being issued equate to one facility, or can a company get a license and open up X number of facilities?
One location, correct. So if we get approved for, if one of our licenses gets approved, then we are either opening up one location where we applied. So, for example, if we applied, or if anybody who applied, what they're calling Area 47, which is those eight counties, if they say, hey, well, you got approved for Area 47, Blue Island is in, and they're in that area, then you can go ahead and open in Blue Island, as long as you, first, you got approved by the state to open in that area, and then Blue Island is approving it as well.
Essentially, eight counties, 47 slots, so you're looking at six slots per county?
Essentially, yeah.
So you're going to be dividing up an entire county among six dispensaries? So you're saying three to five customers in your store at any one given point in time, when there's six or eight stores in that entire county? I tend to think that the demand for legal marijuana probably is going to be a little bit higher than that, when the density of available places to purchase it legally is far less than liquor. So the amount of traffic and parking necessary for that is going to be far greater than anybody sitting here has considered, and that's basic math.
And I was just in Denver, and a lot of the dispensaries that I drove by, some of them in more industrial areas, I mean, as you're saying, kind of a destination, more location, I mean, the parking lots were busy as hell, and there's so many dispensaries there, and I was just surprised to see the traffic going to, you know, some of these destination locations.
I believe that 47 includes the city of Chicago as well. Chicago said we'll take 47, every single one of them will go to Chicago.
100%.
Every single one of them, so.
Howard, with the special tax on town on Western Avenue, does that apply to the countries here? Does that apply? In other words, would that be advantage to the city having that on Western, is having it in the industrial area?
I don't think so, because, because, because the state says the municipality can only do up to 3%. So if we already have one, then we only could do two, I guess. We can't have three plus one.
But you could have up to, it would be up to 5%. There's two already from the state, and you could do up to three, so that would exceed that. But I don't think it would, I don't think it would. That's a good question.
I'm asking that.
Yeah, no, that's a nice question. You can get an extra one.
And the state doesn't want us to go at 3% at day one, they want us to do it incrementally. You know, like 1% and 2, you know, 25% every year, or something like that.
I believe almost every municipality went straight to 3%.
Okay.
We went straight to 3%.
What's that?
Lamont went straight to 3%.
Chicago, too.
Because what the, what the state says is, by doing, by going to 3%, and this is a very rarely, very new business, you're going to make it too expensive, and they're just going to go, you know, and just buy it up, yeah.
To that point, I think Worth did like 1% or 2%, so they could be more competitive.
Yeah.
Do these numbers include the, just the places that already exist?
No. So, and that's actually a good point, that, I mean, the medical, those are the ones that are going to be selling on January 1, so...
Right, as of.
We're going to be, like the...
How many are?
55 in the state.
But we don't have any here, so... So, so this is a question...
So, so 55 in the state, and then each one of those medical got an additional license?
Right.
So say, the one...
So say the one in Posen, they now have an adult use license to find a place to open on January 1st.
And they could come here.
Or they can sell at their current location.
Oh, and they can sell at their current location twice. I think it's and.
I think it might, yeah, I'm not sure on that.
I think it's one and one, they could sell there.
And they can.
And find another location.
Right, because they're kind of like landowners.
So like the one in Posen, for example, could find a location in Crestwood, for example, and start selling adult use on January 1st.
So we'll have clear idea of what demand and impact looks like early in this?
Yeah.
We have three weeks till January 1.
Yeah.
And I, I think, you know, the, Adheferan said, you know, the initial, you know, block-long lines, I believe they have a phase-out line, you know, I may be wrong.
Sure.
Yeah, people will be, they'll be spending their new year in line, yeah.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
Given the numbers that Jeff and I just mentioned and, you know, Area 47, we're, we're here tonight taking the, per se, the approval of four licenses.
You guys could go down to two. I, I originally proposed two, it's just the Aldermen as a group felt like four seems more advantageous. I always said from the beginning, even if.
But the reality of it is that, given the numbers of licenses that are going to be given in this area.
And just to give you more perspective, there's, I mean, one, just to give you more perspective, two, within Cook County alone, which is one of the eight counties within this region, there's 130 municipalities in Cook County alone.
Okay, so is this a fir, the first wave of licenses?
Yeah, that's the first wave, the 75 throughout the whole state, yeah.
And then what would be the second wave?
Um, if I'm not mistaken, I think the second wave is over 100.
Yeah.
100, so now that, that Area 47 possibly become.
It could grow.
86.
Yeah, it could. That's something I can't even speak on, no, really.
It's going to get you.
Or like video gaming.
Yeah, I mean.
Let's see.
Well, you, you said you did, Errol.
Yeah.
What kind of place would your business be interested in?
Uh, size-wise or location, do you mean, or?
Both.
Um, I mean, in Blue Island, personally, our group, they told me a while back, they said, "Adheferan, just forget about that dream, we're moving on," you know, they kind of told me that. And to me, I'm kind of just planting some seeds so I can at least know what you guys are thinking, I want to know what you guys decide as far as the city. But it definitely, for me, would be round two, you know, I wouldn't want to miss round two. Blue Island in general already missed this round one, in my opinion, but round two.
But it's, it's not for a lack of potential location, it's because we're not ready for it?
Yeah, I'd say so, yeah. I wouldn't say, location-wise, no, there's a couple that, that are definitely interesting. For example, the one you guys mentioned a couple times, Walgreens, Old Western, I'd say has a decent location there. It's only really the two that I thought of, you know, personally.
Where on the list?
Um, it's where my brother's tattoo shop is, Ask a Gang, right next to Blue Island Brewery as well, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So they, they have a significant amount of space there, yeah. But for now, it's, it's kind of off the table, yeah.
So do we want to continue this in January, set a specific date and time, maybe earlier time? And come back and revisit this, but in the interim, we're going to provide our findings to me and I could share it with our attorney?
Yeah, that, on that point, you know, just looking at the proposed ordinance, it's well done, but I, I did mark up some questions I have about the definitions.
Right.
Especially the, the definition of cannabis business includes dispensing organization, which suggests that in I-1, where it's permitted, you could put a dispensing organization. That'd be maybe the most significant one. And that the, the facility and the location requirements for dispensing organization are different from all the non-dispensing. And I'm worried that some of these things aren't defined in the code, like, you know, and again, that public, private, that public school question like you raised, I think that's really valid. And I, so some of that stuff could get cleaned up. I don't think we define like a daycare center, daycare home, or residential care, which we see in, in the non-cannabis as a distance requirement in the adult use dispensing organization. We just mentioned childcare center, not in a residence. You know, so just, I think those sections should use the similar language and so like this, so the person reading it understands it. I could just share notes if that's the easiest.
Yeah.
On some of that.
So for example, I would just consider, you know, like craft growers and fusers dispensaries. I guess this is what Jason's trying to say, just simplify it as a definition, as a term versus dispensary, adult use dispensary organizations, plural.
Yeah, and we could list out the individual uses in industrial.
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd be easier.
The only other thought was that with the co-location.
I made a note of that and I realize that that's probably in the definition because of co-location. Maybe you, at the business's standard, you, you put co-located dispensing organization or something like that.
Yeah.
With a percentage of no more than 15% could be sold as retail.
Something like that, yeah.
And I guess from what we're gathering here, whoever wants to do a dispensary in Blue Island will also have to provide onsite parking and that's not a variance or a waiver. Either the person buys a big lot or they buy multiple lots, tear down buildings and build a, a new facility with parking with, I guess, fencing and security, I guess.
Before our next meeting, could you also do like an analysis of other municipalities that have already passed zoning code? For example.
In your spare time.
In your spare time, because I know you have such high staffing levels.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Have your TIS professional put them together.
You know, like for example, Oak Park, Berwyn, and maybe another, you know, comparable.
Do some research too on like other states with like Zero Scent Bank, if there's anything there, kind of how it's.
You know, I know that Oak Park is, you know, hyperactive on everything that they do, so, and they already have a current.
Yeah.
Medical dispensary there.
And Burn, Berwyn has a pretty new zoning ordinance.
Yeah, and Berwyn as well is very similar in nature to Blue Island, so I would like to at least see Oak Park and Berwyn and how they regulate.
So, so what I'll do is as I compile information, I'm going to keep sharing it to both groups via email.
Yeah.
So I don't crash your email systems too, if you're cognizant of that.
Just, there's some questions about the licenses, I, I looked them up, I've seen this before, but just so folks know what's coming. So Wave 1, well, right now, there's the, you know, January 1st, the medical users can sell recreation provided that that community did not opt out. And they were awarded an additional license to find a location. I think growers also were awarded a license to find a location, a retail location, but there's a lot fewer growers. But what we're talking about here mainly is these next waves. So Wave 1 is May 1, 2020, agency awards 75 new licenses as we talked today, 47 of them are within the Chicago metro area. There's also 40 licenses for each of these non-dispensing organizations. The next wave of licenses is until December 21, 2021, where there'll be 110 more dispensing licenses, 60 licenses for all the other, additional 60 licenses for all the others. So those are sort of the two waves that are on the books right now.
So, um, most likely, we're not going to have any planning and zoning in January because of the advertising period and what have you, so I guess we could.
If I may, Howard, we, so we, we published notice for this and, I mean, this is an actual hearing, so if we can pick a date certain tonight, we wouldn't need to publish again and we wouldn't be subject to those, to those date restrictions. So if, you know, I guess if we want to meet in January, that's fine, but we don't have to, we could, in theory, meet sooner, but I know that, you know, we're going to be in the, thick of the holidays before we know it. But if we pick a date, we, we won't need to publish again.
Right, what he's saying is if we pick a date today with the cameras and all that and we don't have to advertise, but we're going to advertise anyway into a newspaper just for consideration? That's how I would, I would play it safe.
The more, the more notice you want to provide, yeah, I mean, it's, I guess it just isn't required if we pick a date tonight because it would be a continuance, it'd be a continuance of this hearing.
All right, we continue once. So I was picking a date, is Thursday okay for everyone here? Okay, so in January.
Well, I'll just add, I, I mean, I would, I would be comfortable voting on this ordinance. I don't know if other people are or not, but I think it's important enough. I think the revenue potential is so significant for a community that's lost so much business that I can't ignore it. But if other folks, I mean, I'm just one, one guy here in a group of, you know, so if other people want more information, I just wanted to let my opinion be there.
With, you're saying tonight you would vote on it?
Yeah.
With suggested changes or?
Yeah, I'd make, I mean, we're only recommending anyways.
Right, right.
I have a scribble of recommendations that I, I think are appropriate, but if, if other folks on the boards think they need more time or there's certain questions and are comfortable, I just put it out there because I don't know if anybody else felt the same way I did, so.
We're an advisory committee, right?
Correct.
At the end of the day, it's just our recommendation, that's the board's recommendation and then the city council will decide to approve it. So I, in terms of Jason doesn't have a, you know, I think, you know, it's not going to be our state, so it's basically passing forward after that.
I prepared a vote.
Does, does anyone, does anyone in the public want to say anything before, come Please state your name and where you live.
My name is Thomas Madrigal, I live at 13427 Mozzart. I was born and raised in this town, I was born 1949, I don't know who's older than me. And I've been retired six years and I do a lot of driving around, you know, just I, you know, and I know there's a lot of kids out there, a lot of idle time. As a matter of fact, sometimes I drive at night, not at night, but just, I see a lot of kids cross, in the street, cross the street. They got the hoodies on, their earplugs, ain't paying attention. Okay, let me give you a background myself. 50 years ago, I was Vietnam, 16 months, I was a combat soldier. Last few months, well, I was a, had my own squad, rifle squad, okay? Marijuana was prevalent there. A lot of people took it, I didn't. I saw a lot of boys did not come back because of the marijuana pot. You know why? Because it, they didn't use it on the field, but when they're back in rear, they're stoned all the time. Your reaction is slow, is slow. There's a lot of guys on that wall in Washington DC died because of drugs, marijuana, hashy, opium, heroin. What's next? Just like this gentleman sitting here, I believe everything you said. You know, that's, I don't, I don't want to hear in Blue Island, I don't. It's, it's going to ruin our kids. Like I said, when I came back Vietnam, I saw a lot of my friends that were on drugs, they continued, they died, overdose, stuff like that. Sure, that's revenue, but how about, how about the lives of these young kids? I know, I've been around 70 years. And like I said, I, thank God I made it back in combat. Like I said, I'm saying something. I got nine grandkids, I don't want them around that crap. It's just, you know, and like I said, I've had a lot of kids, I've been in this town as far as programs, youth programs, baseball, basketball. I know Mike Cindy, his brother Marvin, all these guys, Eric, all these guys. I had a lot of these young boys, a lot of these boys under my toolage. Unfortunately, there's a lot of my boys I knew died because overdose, heroin, whatever stuff they had. So for me, I don't want this stuff around here, that's me. That's, you know, I just, I, I, it'll destroy, believe me, I've seen this all my life. For a couple years, I was Dallas Police Force, Dallas Sexes, rampant in Dallas back in '55, '66, I seen it. And like I said, I, this, you know, I know the, the, the state passed legislatively to have this, well, that's fine, but I don't want it around Blue Island, okay? And if anyone, anyone that want to talk to me about personal stories, I got a bunch of stories. You know, and like I said, I just, thank you very much for listening, to listen to me, because this is not, this is a great town, great town. And I don't want it to go down, you know, because a lot of people would be stoned. I don't, you know, you can see people walking streets like this. I'm serious, I am in dead serious. You know, like I said, I'm glad everybody's here to listen to, you know, open, public hearing and so forth. And like, that's my personal opinion. And like I said, I, great town, guys, great town, great town. Thank you very much for listening to me, thank you.
Thanks for your service.
Thank you for your service.
Is it about Richmond's place in Hahn?
You're dead.
You know, if I might just build on that and again, thank you for your service on, on both fronts, on the military front and on the police, on the police front. I, I work in the 911 field, so I've worked with a lot of police officers and, and that brings to mind, relative to this ordinance and this discussion, have we, has there been input from our police department, our emergency responders in terms of any impacts relative to passing this? It would be one question and then, you know, one of the other comments I was going to make early on, you know, was just, number one, recognizing that there is positive value reported for medical use, there's a lot of testimony for that. And it's not exactly the same from what I understand, but drug addiction itself, no matter, you know, no matter how it's packaged, how smartly it's promoted, legal or illegal, I mean, look at what this nation is doing with opioids currently. And whether one believes that cannabis is a gateway drug or not, addiction is real. People die, families are ruined, communities are impacted. And I think that's why this is such an important topic to discuss, to discuss, to discuss, you know, relative to if the city chooses to move forward and, and, you know, adopt an ordinance, that it's been thoroughly vetted, that the community's had input. And I think that it's in everyone's best interest to ensure that that happens.
What's that? Opting in, right?
They voted on opting in and.
What was the vote? It was 14-0?
I'm not sure. I know.
There's no opt-in vote.
They, they did it for the tax purposes, that's why they did it quickly.
The reason for that, that's not even saying you're allowing it, it's because there's a weird glitch in the, in the state code that says the Illinois Department of Revenue isn't going to collect sales tax until September. So if you were to pass it on January, and one were to open on January 1st, you had to pass an ordinance saying that you would collect sales tax. But you can pass that and still not pass zoning to allow it.
Sure.
So I think that's all that really happened, was that. And I think, as Mark said, I think every community passed that as, just in case, because nobody really knew where it was going yet. But I am curious about the vote as well.
Yeah.
I would have to get the vote.
I guess I just see my, my role as an advisory role and the city council, if they finally say so.
Right.
The city council for it and the public is for it, then, you know, that's ultimately my role as advisor. But I understand all concerns, like the Congress, my color council, something like that, but if at the end of the day, it's a matter of, I'm just an advisory and the city council is for it and the public is for it, I absolutely agree with that.
I don't necessarily know who voted for it, I think the governor decided into law, right?
Yeah. It would be public hearing, public hearing in the city, City of Blue Island, if you back to that seat. Put that here.
Yeah, that was, that was pretty overwhelmingly in favor.
That's Robert Frank, the City of Blue Island.
So would at this time be appropriate either to entertain a motion not to proceed or to proceed within each body?
What I would say is to proceed for another meeting, to spend the next two or three weeks collecting information, sending revisions or stuff to me and then I could forward it to the attorney and then we could come back with, with an ordinance now that we already looked at today. What is it if we go through this route? What is the ordinance going to look like when it goes to community development, city council?
So we would be having this public hearing go into recess and reconvene on a subject I should take.
And at the same time, if we can fill those chairs out there, there's a bunch of.
Yeah.
Uh, yes. As an attorney, what is the best way to encourage more people to come? Technically, this is a text amendment. It's advertised in the local newspaper. We advertised fifteen days before we had this meeting. Technically, we did it at seventeen, but we're fine. Before the meeting...
It's more, it's just on the city website, if you want to put something up there.
Right, city website.
If you want to, it's on the bulletin board.
We're going to be on water bills.
Social media accounts.
We're being taped, we're being recorded today, so now there is an audience that's watching us, or are going to see us eventually a week on YouTube or something.
I would add, the, the sort of public workshop or information was pretty well attended, I thought.
At community development, right? A special meeting?
Yeah, yeah, was well attended. It was, I heard nothing but only people that were in favor of it, people that said, "I am a medical marijuana user, I go to Posen, and I'd rather be in Blue Island." And I think there is, maybe the lack of folks out here might be the, the fact that most people were overwhelmingly in for it, and they expect us to do our job, and they don't have to come to a public meeting every time to say, "Continue to do your job."
And that meeting was November twentieth, because I'm looking at the calendar, that was a special meeting, that was a one-hour meeting before community development. And Afrin was there. There were fifteen, twenty people.
Oh, in, in here?
Yeah.
I'd say, yeah, I'd say half the room.
More than that, maybe probably fifteen or twenty spoke.
Yeah, half the room spoke, half the room was full, though.
And we have twenty thousand people that live in town?
Yeah.
I'd like to add one thing, too. As far as bringing more people in to these meetings, before I say anything, thank you for your service, too, once again. I definitely feel, and you guys, I'm sure, would agree, we're definitely misrepresented here, right? We got one person, my brother, and a gentleman here, which is part of the reason why, after coming to a couple of these different meetings, you know, I had a poll on Facebook, you know, that's one of the easiest ways to communicate with everybody in the city. So I put a post, a poll, in two or three, two different groups, Blue Island groups. Specifically, there was about a hundred and seventy people who voted. I pretty much said, "Hey, do you want cannabis, legal cannabis in Blue Island?" About a hundred and seventy voted yes, maybe nine voted no. If we, if we think about it and say, "Hey, well, maybe half of them were not even Blue Island residents," at the end of the day, it's still a majority that want it. Uh, just to throw that out there, you know, as far as, um...
How do we get a Facebook poll?
It helps.
What's the margin, what's the margin of error?
Just to say...
Even if it's a Facebook poll.
It's better than this one here.
Yeah, but even if it's a Facebook poll, they don't know.
And we're also representative of the community itself.
Yeah.
And I'm a member, I'm just saying, like, I'm a member of all the Blue Island posts I've never seen, like, that, I have no awareness around that whatsoever, I've never seen it, and no indication around it.
And same thing for this room.
So I'm just saying, like, just to be fair, there's a lot of people that just aren't aware, I think, that these discussions are happening.
Nor is there actual reference to any documentation of the, you know, charitable work that your organization has done in Colorado, or any, just, none of that.
Let me take some out for you.
Sure.
But may, but maybe, you know, you raise, you raise a point on that, and maybe one of the things we should consider is an advisory referendum to be put on the ballot. And that's, that's one of the common ways that our community can, can speak on this for those that choose to vote.
How were the votes up here? Did we vote tonight or not vote tonight? Where did it go from, from here?
Well, it was...
What community goes to next?
Community development.
Community development.
And then city council.
When does community development meet next?
They usually meet on the second Wednesday of every month.
So their meeting already happened in December, yesterday?
Yeah, we met yesterday. I also gave every community development member copies of the same copies I gave to you guys, I gave to them, and I'm also expecting feedback from them.
And I'm going to assume they're not going to have a special meeting next week?
No.
And the following Wednesday is Christmas? Following Wednesday is January first?
January eighth is their next, definitely.
January eighth is their next meeting.
Right, January eighth. And I was looking at maybe the sixteenth or the twenty-third of January for us.
I was thinking sooner than that.
Yeah, let's move it to a Tuesday. So if we're, I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to move it, we can do it the day before, and then we can get it right to them.
January sixth, yeah, Monday, January sixth.
Or we go now?
I don't think we should be waiting until mid-January. I think we should at least be, you know, have a final decision before the community development committee meets, but January eighth. Is that enough time to do the research? Is it long?
What research are you looking for?
Real estate. I mean, I just wanted a copy of the, you know, I just wanted a basically poll and see how Berwyn and Oak Park regulate these same exact issues.
I think in defense of that, we'll have, I mean, once, I mean, if we're not even talking about till May, you know, just to say that we would go with it, by the time May rolls around, we would have a brilliant idea of, we would have a better idea of what the broader picture is going to look like five months into the operation.
So I mentioned those two dates, just to give us time to research, prepare, reach out to other people in the community if they're interested in the topic or not. But if you guys want to have an earlier vote or an earlier date, I'm fine with it. Legally, if we announce it tonight, we don't have to do the newspaper. Is that correct?
Correct. If we pick a date certain tonight, we don't need to.
If we do it tonight, in front of the cameras, we could do it as quickly as you want. January sixth?
Monday, January sixth.
Can we get something, though, in addition, such as having it printed on water bills or some kind of city publications?
I think we missed the deadline with the water bill. I guess what we can do is we could put a copy of the ordinance online for the public to view it.
Yeah.
You can have it at the library, you can have it, sorry, available on City Hall, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it's physically impossible to send a person a copy of the notice to every person here, but, you know, post it on, on the ordinance. I mean, post the ordinance on the website, as one of those, you know, news stories, not tucked in under business, second to last page in the website.
That thing doesn't change the overall big picture versus voting on it tonight?
Correct.
Correct.
That's right. So that probably doesn't matter, now that does change the overall picture?
Yeah.
You'd have more time.
Well, he's stating that our chances are pretty much none whatsoever at one of the original licenses that is to be issued. So us rushing through it for zero chance, are we really doing our due diligence to the community which we serve, or are we actually, like, going against our due diligence for them? I truly believe that we should wait.
So then if there's no difference between voting now and voting on the sixth, what's our pushing back since the other one?
Yeah.
If you're more comfortable, certainly.
There's no difference in the overall picture, that, right? Day-wise? Because we have to wait for the end of the meeting, so I mean, anything...
Right, but you also have to keep in mind, so technically, before we go to city council, the minutes have to be done for the meeting that we have to vote on. So the city council wants to review the minutes on the particularities of any issues that came up, they need to have those minutes. Unfortunately, I'm the person who's doing most of the minutes. I'm supposed to have staff, but staff is not there, so it's really me. So we have to also keep that in mind. I'm looking at possibly two weeks after January sixth at city council, because this also has to be reviewed by the city's attorney. You have to understand that Mr. Matthew Ingersoll, he represents the city council. He's here because Chairman Bellato said we need to have legal representation, he suggested this person to be here helping us draft this ordinance. Eventually, when it goes to city council, Odell Senna Stark, either Kerry or another person is going to be reviewing this ordinance, so we need time for them to review it also.
And I just, I've sent it to Kerry already, so he's seen it as well.
Yeah, and I know their firm represents communities that have approved it, Chicago Bridge, I think, Kankakee, others.
So relative to the things we've talked about tonight, the questions we've raised, the concerns, are you, are we envisioning, then, that this, they would get incorporated into a revised text ordinance for us to review?
Yeah, I'm envisioning working with Howard over the next few weeks to incorporate, and any feedback that wasn't provided tonight, if you could provide him, so then we can revise the document and get it to you with a little bit of lead time, so you have time to review it before the meeting on the sixth, that would be helpful.
Perfect. I don't know, I guess, I mean, there's two separate bodies here, but, I mean, Mark, as chair for Plan Commission, January sixth?
I believe, yeah, I believe January sixth, Monday, January sixth, at six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
Rather than seven-thirty?
Yes. Six-thirty.
Just so we're not here, it's ten o'clock.
January sixth.
I got a sneaking suspicion.
Sneaking suspicion, what?
That it'll be another late evening.
There'll be another what?
Late evening.
Oh.
And this is the meeting that we will try and have the public at?
Well, I mean, the public was invited to this one.
Okay.
So can Chairman Griffin also announce the date, since I'm not very clear?
January sixth, Monday, six-thirty.
If we could make just a motion, if both bodies would just make a motion to continue the hearing?
We'll make a motion to go into recess and reconvene on Monday, January sixth, at six-thirty PM.
That'll work.
Make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We agree on something.
All right, so that, so we're out of, so we're still in a public hearing, though. Let's, um, can we just, for the record, ask if any members of the public want to speak again outside of the context of the hearing?